And so I would like to call this common council meeting for the city of Beaver Dam to order. And clerk, if you want to call the roll.
Anderson.
Here.
Bonnet. Burnett. Perry.
Here.
Clarity.
Here.
Fisher.
Aye.
Ganski.
Here.
Hailey.
Here.
Keel.
Here.
Olson.
Present.
Perkins. Wild.
Here.
Yudz.
Here.
Zap.
Here.
And that the record show that both Alders Burnett and Perkins are excused. Next, we would like to do the pledge of allegiance followed by a moment of silent deliberation.
By doing states of America and together in one nation indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Our next item is our informal public hearing. This is the opportunity for any citizen who would like to come forward and raise an issue before council to do so. If you are here in person or online and would like to speak to council, now is the time. And one last request, if there's anyone here who would like to speak to council. And seeing and hearing no requests, we will close the informal hearing. And next up, we have announcements. Alders, any announcements you'd like to make? Okay, then I have just a few. Just a reminder that next Monday, the 15th, we will be meeting for our annual budget workshop at 6:30. It will be at the Department of Public Works like it was in the past. You should be receiving budget materials in your emails by the end of the week. I know Kayla's busy working on those. And then with any luck, we are not planning on having a council meeting on the 22nd, unless something dire comes up. But for now, we are not planning on having a council meeting on the 22nd. And also a reminder that next week is Jay's last week and Larry, Larry Administrator Larry's first week. Yeah, we're gonna have to, that's an issue we're gonna have to deal with as a council. What to call the two Larrys. Old Larry, new Larry, I don't know. We'll figure it out. It got a little confusing at the admin meeting. Next announcement, last Tuesday was the soft opening of our interim library. If you have not had an opportunity to visit, I highly encourage you to. They've made really good use of the space and it's already very popular. There were quite a few patrons there when I stopped in. The official opening is tomorrow. There is a ribbon cutting at noon. So if any of you would like to join us and be there for the ribbon cutting, that's at the interim library tomorrow. And then finally, starting next Sunday, the 14th, that begins the week-long Artist in Residency Program that is being sponsored by AAUW, along with a variety of community partners, including the Beaver Dam Area Community Foundation, Good Karma Brands, Marine Park, the community library, the high school, Wayland Academy, the Rotary, the Kiwanis. All of these organizations have banded together to bring to Beaver Dam the photographer, writer, teacher, speaker, John Noltner, who grew up here in Beaver Dam and will be here the entire week. He'll have a display of his photographs at the Dodge County Center for the Arts. And then throughout the week, there will be a wide variety of activities and classes and all kinds of opportunities for people within the community to hear John and to participate in his various programs. All of you should have received in the mail an individual invitation to the opening reception, which is Sunday, the 14th. It's from 5 to 7. It's at the Dodge County Center for the Arts. He will have his most recent photographs on display. He will be speaking at 6 o'clock if you want to hear him talk about that art exhibit. But otherwise, it's an open reception to meet Mr. Noltner and to have some snacks and to view the art. If you have not had an opportunity to RSVP, you can do that to me this evening. This one event is not open to the public, so we're trying to get an idea of the number of people who will be attending. But even if you don't RSVP, if you decide to come at the last minute, it'll, we'll squeeze you in. So anyway, it's gonna be an exciting week. Any other announcements?
Don't forget our Pepper Fest this Saturday at the Parkfield Shopping Center from 9 to 4th Road, I believe.
Yes, yep. Can't forget the Beaver Dam Pepper Fest. Good. Okay. Then next up, we have the disposition of the minutes from our last common council meeting. You've all had an opportunity to see those as they were included in your packet. Can I get a motion to accept them as written? Alder Wild?
Motion to accept the minutes as written.
And a second?
Second.
And are there any corrections or edits that anyone wants to include? Okay, then all those in favor of approval of the minutes, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Okay, the minutes pass. Next up is our city administrators' report.
Thanks, Mayor. Good evening, everyone. It's a pleasure to be with you tonight. Just to maybe follow up a sentence or two on the budget that the mayor mentioned for next week. Your department head team has been working diligently. Kayla has been doing a great job trying to assemble the budget and get it out to you as soon as possible late this week. I guess we'll just commit to that late this week. So we're looking for it by Wednesday or even Thursday. That might not be realistic, but we'll try to get it to you as soon as we can. Realistically, Friday, if we get it to you sooner than that, that would be a bonus. But the plan is to get it out this week in advance of Monday. As you're reviewing the budget materials that you have before this upcoming Monday's council meeting, please don't hesitate to reach out to the specific department head, if it's a department level kind of question, to Kayla and/or to myself. I'll say anytime over the weekend regarding me. And then if it's something that there is additional follow-up information, I'll try to work with the department head, not giving all the department heads the requirement to respond to emails over the weekend. That's not something that I would expect, but certainly don't hesitate. You have my contact information, cellphone and email. I'll respond if it's a question that I can work with Kayla on and get back to you. I'd be happy to do so in advance of Monday. We're meeting tomorrow as a team. The department head team is meeting here tomorrow to kind of plan the process for next Monday so that we can best prepare our presentation to you and position the 2026 budget process in the best manner moving forward. I think the process has been similar to previous years that have taken place, from my understanding. Certainly not looking to invoke any significant change as your interim city administrator, but just to be a part of the process and assist where I can along the way. I'll share a couple of other items, the, maybe just two heads up. The chicken, it was on the administrative committee meeting a second ago. So know that the chicken discussion is there again. There is ample room for future discussion. And that's the action that the administrative committee took, was to postpone any kind of formal action, but to continue discussing and moving forward on that topic. And in addition to that, potential licensure, Class A licenses have been discussed again within the clerk's office. There's been a request made for the selling of wine at one of your downtown shops. And there is not an available Class A license at this time. The clerk's team is doing some research on that. And just know that they'll come back to you with, you know, information for the future and that the possibility of looking for an amendment or not to that ordinance. But know that that discussion is taking place. The city of Beaver Dam has a more restrictive Class A sale ordinance in place than what's required by the state. And that's just a fact that's been in place for a long time and one that at least one business is interested in adding that kind of a sale to their downtown operation. And then lastly, I'll share the plan commission action from this last meet, the last few weeks. The school district for their large new school expansion has been working diligently with Todd and utilities and the whole team really, fire and the whole city of Beaver Dam team that's involved in such a monumentous project. And they're working really closely and collaboratively. There was an email that came in this week that showed some movement by the school district on their willingness to adapt to what the city is requesting. So that's been really collaborative and impressive to see the two sides working together. I won't say that they're 100% all in. I haven't talked to Todd about that specifically. But they're seemingly working in a positive manner to get to, you know, the result that not only is in the best interest of the school district, but the city as a whole and the residents. And your team is pushing them to make sure that that is, that project positions the city well for the future. That's all I have. I'll answer any questions that you might have.
Any questions for Jay? Okay, then we are going to move on to communications.
There are no communications tonight.
Then that brings us to the approval of the bills from August 15th to September 4th in the amount of $5,959,399.56. Can I get a motion? Alder Zap.
Make a motion to approve.
Great, and a second?
Second.
Alder Ganski, thank you. Any questions or comments? We do have Kayla here. Alder Zap.
I'll just note that the administrative committee did discuss the large amount of this month's invoices and the relation to the incentive payment that was agreed to with the Generac facility, right? So this is part of our tax incremental development agreement in order to bring in these new developments. There is these development payments, which are, the city will recoup its costs through the collection of tax dollars eventually from Generac. But that was acknowledged and we did approve the bills in admin.
Good, any other questions or comments? Okay, seeing none. All those in favor of approving the bills, so signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? So we will.
Abstain, Mayor.
Oh, thank you, Alder Fisher. Did you get that, Vicki? Okay. Very good. The bills will be paid. Next up are resolutions. But before we get to the resolutions, you'll notice that our first resolution, we are going to be asked to acknowledge a donation from the Rotary Club for the Swan Park Spring House renovation project. And before we address the resolution itself, we have the president of the Rotary Club here, Sheriff Dale Schmidt. And I believe he wants to just talk to us a little bit. Tell us a little bit about what Rotary's been doing.
Thank you, Mayor. I'll correct that. I'm not the president. I am the chair of the Service Project Committee. That's okay. Our president, Shane, wasn't able to be here tonight. But I appreciate the opportunity to be able to just tell you a little bit about Rotary Lights, one of our two big projects that we have in Beaver Dam Rotary. And I just wanted to give you a little bit of history, where we're at, and how we came to this donation. And so just a little bit over nine years ago, I was part of Leadership Beaver Dam. I call it the class of 16, 17, best class ever. And as you know, anybody in Leadership Beaver Dam, theirs is always allegedly the best class ever, but ours was. But so we, as part of our classes, we have a project. And when I was younger, I always went through Lakeside Park and Fond du Lac, saw the lights out there. And now living out here on Shaw Hill Road, I drive by Swan Park all the time. Why don't we have something there? So that was my project. And I had a lot of people tell me, it's never gonna happen, Sheriff. You're never gonna get it done. You're not gonna have enough people to maintain it. And really, these people didn't know me well enough. Because we are on year nine now, and every year is better than the year before. We started out with 15 trees, if you remember, along Mill Street. We had 15 trees along the Mill Street Shelter, and we had a few trunks that were wrapped. And it was like, well, that was okay, but it was kind of small. I'm like, well, I only have so much money the first year. And every year, we have been able to raise more and more and more. We've been able to raise money through the trees, on the pathways. We've added angels and soldiers and a ton of displays, wireframe displays throughout the park. And I have had so many stories that I could share with you. I spend a lot of time out there. I'm probably putting in full-time hours, starting about now until we get these lights turned on, in addition to my other work. And I hear all kinds of stories while I'm out there. We've had Santa deliver a puppy to the grandkids of a couple that brought their kids out there. That was really neat. Santa pulling out from behind his chair a puppy and handing it to the kids, watching their faces was amazing. There was a resident that lives on Vita Street that came out to me as I was setting up. And she said, this is just a dark park in the wintertime. And my husband was not doing well. And she said, we wanted to go to the park, but it was just so dark at night. And we just couldn't do that. We didn't feel comfortable out there in the park. Now that there's lights out there, he was there for a year or two, and he saw the lights, and he was amazed by it. And she wishes that he was still around to see it today because she and her family walk through the park regularly in the wintertime. She said it's a winter wonderland. And it is something that we never had before. And they're so proud to live right next to that park. And so we really have been able to, I've got pictures of a young couple in Santa's sleigh. They don't know I was taking pictures, but I got pictures of them kissing. It was really cool. Lots of story after story after story. And we've had so many partnerships, and Rotary Club has really partnered with the city. We've also partnered with InterQuest. As you know, we have cameras out there. That agreement has expired. I'm working on renewing that one. But all of the internet out there, 365 days a year, is provided by InterQuest and Rotary as a partner. And so we've been able to work with you and InterQuest to make that happen. It's helped prevent some vandalism. It's helped me in law enforcement actually have some video of some things that go on out there. And so we've had some great partnerships, and I want to thank you for that. And so over the last couple of years, we've been able to raise funds through our sponsorship program to renovate the Spring House. We know, as I'm putting lights on it, I see the wood. I see it rotting and decaying, and it is in need of renovation. And so working with John Newman, who's been another excellent partner for me, we've been able to identify the project. And the first one was taking care of the roof. As you know, the city council approved the project for $10,800 to replace the roof earlier this year. While I just happened to raise $27,000 over the last two years for these projects on the Spring House. So we are gonna reimburse the city for that $10,800 so the city does not have to foot the bill for the roof replacement, leaving us with the remainder of that $27,000 to be used for other projects. And John and his staff are already working on replacing some of the wood on the outside of it. And until every last dollar of that $27,000 is used up, we will be continuing to come back to the city to help you pay for the restoration of that beautiful building in our park. So that is a very brief overview. But before I cut to this, I do have to give credit to the person who keeps me on track because I couldn't do this alone with the Rotary Club. You may not have known this, but the sheriff's wife in the past was responsible for cooking for the inmates. That's what the sheriff's wife did. Well, since we don't do that anymore, I've asked her to help me out with some service projects. So Cassandra Schmidt is my right hand in all of this. And she really does keep me moving and on task and make sure all the sponsors are notified. Otherwise, they'd be all over me saying, hey, what are you doing, Sheriff? So I certainly couldn't do this without her. But really, thank you to the city for this partnership. It has been absolutely a ton of work, but really worth it. Once those lights go on and we see all those kids with the big beaming, smiling faces. So with that, I do have a large check to present to you when you're ready here. I'd love to get a picture with the council whenever you're ready to do that. Thank you.
Okay, first, we need to pass the resolution, but then we can take our picture. So can I get a motion? Well, clerk, you want to read the resolution?
Resolution number 79-2025, a resolution to acknowledge a donation from the Rotary Club of Beaver Dam toward the Swan Park Spring House renovation project.
Okay, now I need a motion. Alder Olson?
Make a motion to approve as presented, please.
Thank you, and a second, Alder Fisher?
I'll second in motion.
Thank you. Questions, discussion? Alder Olson?
Just a big thank you and a round of applause for everything you've done. Thank you for my.
Very good, anything else? And.
Call the roll.
Oh, okay, so we're gonna call the roll.
Anderson.
Aye.
Bonnet.
Aye.
Perry.
Aye.
Clarity.
Aye.
Fisher.
Aye.
Ganski.
Aye.
Hailey.
Aye.
Keel.
Aye.
Olson.
Aye.
Wild.
Aye.
Yudz.
Aye.
Zap.
Aye.
So the resolution carries. So now this means we get to have our picture taken. I think usually we do it up here. So a few tall ones in the front, shorter in the, or in the back, shorter in the front. Very good. Our next item on the agenda is resolution number 80-2025.
Resolution number 80-2025, a resolution authorizing the city of Beaver Dam to obtain a loan through the Board of Commissioners of Public Land's State Trust Fund Loan Program in the amount not to exceed $2,500,000 and to levy a tax in connection therewith.
And for this one, I'm gonna call Kayla forward. We both received, after I talked to Kayla, I checked my email, we both received an exciting email at about quarter to five. I'll let Kayla.
Yeah, so as you recall, during Elder's presentation of our annual debt issuance, he briefly touched on the incentive payment for Generac and the intention to pay for part of it out of cash funds out of that TID and then to borrow for the other portion. As laid out in the developer's agreement, it did state that we were not to use general obligation debt to do so. So we did come to you with a proposal that it would make more sense to use general obligation debt versus a revenue bond. Generally, there's lower interest rates associated with that. We did get that approval from Generac, so we are good on that end. And then today, about three hours ago, received an email from the state that they've lowered their interest rates. So when I requested the original application packet for this borrowing, the rate was set at 5.5%. They announced today that they've lowered it to 5%. So I immediately picked up the phone and called Richard at the state and clarified with him that we would need to request an entire new application packet in order to qualify for the 5%. So that half a percent difference is just shy of $47,000. So it would be my recommendation that we postpone tonight. And then I will bring forth a new resolution from the new packet with a 5% interest rate on the 2.5 borrowing. And then I just wanted to provide a little clarification because the resolution is kind of a cookie cutter provided from the state. This is going to be a TID borrowing. And so therefore, there is no increase to the mill rate. And so it really has no increase to the taxes. However, the taxes collected, or the increment collected within that TID is going to then pay for this borrowing. So I know it says to levy a tax, but I just wanted to clarify that this borrowing does not increase the mill rate for the 2025 taxes or moving forward.
Excuse me, thank you, Kayla. Any questions for Kayla? Okay, good. Oh, Alder Wild? Okay, yeah, very good news. But that does mean we're going to skip this item and we'll bring it back at our next council meeting. Very good.
Do we need, are we just tabling it?
Nope. We're just, we're just gonna skip it.
Okay.
Yep. Next up is resolution 81-2025.
Resolution number 81-2025, a resolution updating the authorized signers on the city bank's account, accounts, excuse me.
Okay, and I don't know. It was in your packet. I thought it was pretty self-explanatory, but Kayla, maybe you want to?
Yeah, so this is just kind of some general housekeeping when we bring on a new. When we bring on a new city administrator, we need to update the authorized signers for the accounts. Since I was already planning on being here tonight, I thought I might as well bring that forth tonight as well. As you note, in the resolution, it does specify that it is not in effect until Larry begins, so.
Good. Any other questions for Kayla? Okay, then can I get a motion? Alder Yads?
I'll make that motion.
And Alder Wild?
I'll second it.
Thank you. Any other comments, questions? Okay, then we can call the roll.
Bonnet?
Aye.
Puri?
Aye.
Larity?
Aye.
Fisher?
Right.
Ganski?
Aye.
Hailey?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Perkins? Oh, sorry. Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zap?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
So the resolution carries. Very good. Um, next up, discussion and possible action considering the beverage operator license approval of Kim Firehammer. Okay, so Larry's going to start us off.
So under the village, there's a little bit of confusion maybe about the process, but under the village is our city's ordinance. If the police chief recommends denial of an operator's license, then it automatically comes to council for the council to make the final determination. So that's really what we're here for. If, I don't know if this Firehammer is here, that determination should be made regardless of whether somebody is presenting information at this point, as to whether or not to give effect to the chief's recommendation.
Okay, and I know there was discussion in admin, so Alder Zap, maybe you want to weigh in?
Yes, so a few weeks ago, the administrative committee did review Ms. Firehammer's request to reinstate her beverage operator license. Given her offenses, the timing of offenses in relation to her employment, the evidence that she provided or lack thereof, you know, she, there wasn't any... No one came to speak for her to show her rehabilitation, right? So there was really just the letter and her unhappy with the denial. But the offenses, the OWI offenses occur with, within, I think it was within a year, it's like July 2024 was when the latest OWI happened. So the committee felt that that was too soon to allow her license to be reinstated or to approve. So we confirmed the chief's decision to deny her beverage operator license. She still can, as my understanding, chief, that she still could work at an establishment that sells liquor. She just could not be the only bartender. Is that correct? Okay, so if there's any questions on what we did, but we did agree with chief on denial.
Okay, Alder Olson?
Just to make sure I'm reading her correctly, she wasn't at the admin committee either?
She was not present, no.
Thank you.
Yep.
Alder Bonnet?
Question, I guess, is when I read through the information, the relationship between an OWI and a bartender's license, I guess I didn't know how that fit together. I mean, they're separate entities. One is employment, the other one is traffic.
Certainly, and Larry or chief, our understanding is the nature of the offense is related to the employment, right? So the nature of the offense was an OWI with alcohol, so it was an alcohol-related traffic offense, and that is, an alcohol offense is related to the duties of a job of distributing alcohol. So they are related, and I would defer to attorney kind of Packy or chief Kreitsinger if I misunderstood, but...
I don't see chief jumping up. So I, I agree, yeah, that, you know, that almost every community, if not every community we work in, they consider, you know, alcohol-related offenses, you know, one of your primary responsibilities as an operator is to make sure people aren't consuming enough alcohol, that they would be a danger driving and that they're not overly intoxicated and that the alcohol beverage laws and respect for those laws as a whole are very often considered as relevant to someone's ability to perform that duty.
And that's what I was told by the state. It had to be related, and I believe operating a motor vehicle while in the influence involving alcohol is related to the alcohol, the beverage operator's license. So that's why it was denied too. But I did receive new information today that the administrative committee was not given, and I did talk to probation and parole today based on her conviction on May 20th of 2005. She was found guilty. She was placed on probation for two years, and her probation agent at this time does not support her having a beverage operator's license. And she also has a rule at this time that she is not to be on the premise where alcohol is their primary business. And if you look in her letter, she talks about being, doing bartending and being bartending. She still can serve alcohol. She just can't do it alone, so she can be at an establishment where someone else has a license and she can serve alcohol. But when I talked to probation and parole, we agreed that we would recommend a one-year denial and reconsidered from the date that the administrative committee denied her license, and we would re-review it at that time and then make, could make possible recommendations to the committee if that's how you wish to handle it. But that was, original recommendation was one year.
Yeah, and so in this case, it's really just a denial. If this person wants to reapply, then chief and team can certainly evaluate that, you know, the time that's gone by and the things like that. If ever you do have someone who wants to present information, the statutes are pretty particular about what information has to be considered about rehabilitation. We don't have that here because the person's not presenting us with any information. So I think at this point, if you decide to give effect to the chief's recommendation, it would just be a simple denial. Then what would have happened is Kieran will work with Vicky or Tracy to draft a letter as required by the statutes and send that out to the person explaining in writing why the denial occurred.
So Larry, do we need to take a vote on the denial? Okay, so are there any other questions for either Larry or the chief or any other comments? Then I need a motion. Alder Fisher? Oh, you, you turned on your mic!
Didn't read your answer, I had...
I thought you were going to talk.
I'll make that motion then.
And can you clarify, Alder Yads, what your motion is? Because we don't have, we just have consideration, possible action. So what is your motion?
I guess the motion would be denial of her license until she's eligible again sometime next year, I believe, on the exact date, but denial until further appeal.
Until she reapplies and it's...
Yeah, about a year from now.
But take the year about, year out of your motion because it's, we're not delaying an approval. It's either denial or...
So...
The way I would state it is just to deny the operator's license.
Okay, just denial of the liquor license as at this point.
Okay, and a second, Alder Wild?
I'll second that, yes.
Okay, any other comments or discussion? Okay, then, Vicky, why don't you call the roll?
Larity?
Aye.
Fisher?
Aye.
Ganski?
Aye.
Hailey?
Aye.
Keel?
Aye.
Olson?
Aye.
Wild?
Aye.
Yads?
Aye.
Zap?
Aye.
Anderson?
Aye.
Bonnet?
Aye.
Puri?
Aye.
Okay, so the license is denied. Before we adjourn, I just have one other item. I would like to wish our director of all things trees and parks, John Newman, I'd like to wish him a happy birthday. John, do you want us to sing? Would you like us to sing? Okay, then can I get a motion to adjourn?
I'll make a motion to adjourn.
Thank you, and a second?
Seconded, honor.
Very good. All those in favor?
Aye.
We will see you next Monday at the Department of Public...